I get a lot of the mind.
Okay.
That's all we have.
Okay, you ready? Call the meeting to order, please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Garza, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Chairman Di Maria?
Here.
Vice Chairman Albert?
Here.
Ms. Kiefer?
Here.
Mr. O'Handlon?
Here.
Ms. Seberg?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Alonso? Ms. Maddick?
They didn't have school today.
I know.
Additions or deletions, Dr. McGorick?
We have a ratification of personnel appointments, resignations, transfers, and recommend determinations.
Okay, thank you.
To the consent agenda.
There's no spotlights. I'm gonna take a moment here and explain a couple of things of what we're doing this evening and on Thursday. Normally, when we have a snow day, we don't have any meetings either. We didn't want to force anybody to come here to speak on the budget tonight. Happy you ladies have shown up. And if there are folks that can't get here, we are going to recess tonight's meeting. We are not going to close it and reopen on Thursday in case anybody else would like to speak. So anybody watching at home thinking you can't get here, you should be able to get here by Thursday.
During the meeting, we'll recess the public hearing.
Does the meeting not have to remain open?
That's my understanding. You close the meeting, keep the public hearing open. You can do either way, but...
They said just to recess.
We called the lawyer to find out. So... I trust the lawyer. Yeah, because what we normally would've done was just move this meeting to Thursday. But we would've had to have advertised our public hearing for 10 days so that we could get that in. But we really can't do any work in that timeframe to our budget until we hear from our citizens. So we decided to do both nights to make sure everybody has their opportunity to speak, that we have the opportunity to listen to as many citizens as possible without interrupting things because of a middle-of-March snowstorm. So that's why we're here tonight and why we will be here Thursday, Thursday only for the public hearing. We won't be doing anything else. Okay. Committee reports. Academics, Mr. Williams?
Yes. Academic committee had a meeting Tuesday. Last night, we discussed mainly the calendar issues and the calendar for 2018-19 will come before this board, I believe, on the 28th.
Thank you, sir. Education support, Mr. Albert?
No committee report, sir.
Thank you. Policy, Ms. Kiefer?
Yes, sir. We will be talking about updates to policies later on during the discussion agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. And finance, Mr. Albert?
We're in the budget work session, sir.
We're doing what we need to do.
There you go.
All of these are finance meetings now. Personnel, Ms. Seberg?
No report.
Thank you, ma'am. Board member comments. We're gonna mix it up a little bit. Ms. Seberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just throw your curve.
I trust that everyone's enjoyed their snow day today, made the most of it, and will enjoy tomorrow. Earlier this month, I was able to check out through a robotics tournament at Battlefield High School. Osborne's team, which is called 1895 Lambda Core, ended the competition ranked second out of 39 competitors, and it was really exciting. The team's gonna compete again this weekend in Owings Mills, Maryland, and if you know of any students that are kinda into that, or maybe they wanna watch, they can watch a live stream on firstchesapeake.org. It's F-I-R-S-T. But it's a great way to kinda expose them, some of our younger kids, to this before they reach Osborne. Also last week was National School Breakfast Week, which is held to raise awareness of the availability of school breakfast, the school breakfast program at our schools. And I enjoyed helping serve breakfast to the kids at Met's Middle School and hearing about some of the events that they have planned to help our students learn about nutrition in a fun way. I also wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of the plans for the Fire Station 21. There's gonna be a community meeting at Round Elementary School next Tuesday, March 21st, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Only one comment. About a week and a half ago, as part of Read Across America, I was able to read to Ms. Hoagland's class at Jenny Dean Elementary. They were excellent, and I enjoyed reading to the students and would love to read to them again. And I wanna commend all the staff there for putting in a great program. There were lots of people who came to read, and the students were incredible, and they were attentive, and they participated. So thank you to the dean's staff and to everyone who did that, put the program together for Read Across America. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Handlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy Pi Day 3/14, and also Happy St. Patrick's Day. It's kind of an unusual, it's, the real holiday's not till Friday, but we had all the parades last weekend, so maybe it's just an Irish week, I have my green shirt on. So Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone. And I wanna thank the Osborne PTA who served coffee and muffins to all the teachers Monday morning to help them transition through the change in the time coming in what would be an hour earlier to your body. So anyway, they did a good job serving the staff there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Williams? You just keep coming up the block.
All right. First, I'd like to remind everybody to please clear your sidewalks in front of your house. I drove around the city today, and it was probably about 70%, 30%. 70% were cleared from the roads that I drove down, 30% not. So I'm begging the 30% to please do so. Kids have to walk to the bus stop. Secondly, I attended the Planning Commission's meeting on March 1st where they had a report from staff and a report from the owner, Holtzman Oil Corporation, for a special use permit. They wanted to expand their business and add $30,000, $30,000, 30,000 gallon tanks of propane, a storage area, right at the corner of Prince William and Hastings, right in front of...
I think it's Wellington.
I mean Wellington, I'm sorry, Wellington. Right in front of Jenny Dean Elementary School. Just a real quick recap, staff approved the special use permit because everything did fall in line after talking to the fire department, all the rules and regulations. Everything did fall in line legally within the scope that they needed to make a decision on. However, the Planning Commission, after hearing from many, 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 many citizens, chose unanimously to suggest that that not be approved. So it'll be interesting to see what council chooses to do. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you. I too will be short, 'cause I really am interested to hear about the comments on the budget and just to talk through our policies a little bit. But I did wanna congratulate Osborne for their Illusions art exhibit at Manassas Museum. We were able to go there at the kickoff. I believe it's still up there, though I don't know how long it will be up at the museum. But it was a great collaboration with the city, and it's, I believe, the third one. So Sarah Weaver, her team, and the kids just did an awesome job. And I just wanted to thank those who did come out tonight. We look forward to hearing from you and appreciate that you are here and encourage others to come out on Thursday. I too wanted to elaborate just a little on Mr. Williams' remarks. I was not able to actually be at the dean day of reading, but I did go last Friday and was with Mrs. Kuss's class, and those kids were just awesome. I actually got an invitation back, which I guess was good. I was really thrilled, but they were so well behaved and so engaging. So they're always looking for readers, so if anybody has, you know, half an hour to just go and see our kids, it's a really great thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Albert?
Emphasize what Mrs. Williams said about clearing your sidewalks. First snow of the year, and people seem to have forgotten what it's like. And while we don't have school tomorrow, that gives everybody an extra day to make sure the kids can walk to school safely on Thursday.
Thank you, sir. I did five today, just so everybody, you know, y'all can do one.
Get me beat, I only got four.
Okay.
Snow blowers.
Yeah.
Shh, don't give the secret to anybody, heart attacks.
Okay. I don't know how many people are watching. You're snowing, and you got nothing else to do. Hopefully you are. There will be an election on April 18th. It was brought before us last week. We did one thing that we don't normally do. We waived second reading so that we could announce that we will not have school on April 18th a week ago, so that our parents and staff can have time to prepare for that. I'm not thrilled that there's an election on April 18th. I believe politics was put ahead of our children, and I have a big problem with that. But it's out of our control. But what is in our control is to keep our kids safe. So this board voted to close on April 18th. As Ms. Seberg said, there is a public forum on March 21st at Round about the firehouse that is going, is proposed to go in right next door to Round. It shares a border with Round, property line. We have had a budget meeting set for March 21st. We have moved that to March 23rd so that we can attend this forum, because we believe it's important. We moved to the 22nd? We just went to Wednesday? All right, so I gotta, still gotta go to that wellness thing? Oh, they're gonna tell me how bad I am? All right, so we're moving our budget to March 22nd. That's why we keep these people up here. We encourage you to show up for the firehouse forum. The proposal right now has the city using our entrance, our second entrance to Round, for returning apparatus, widening that entrance. The board has not discussed amongst themselves yet exactly our feeling on that. My feeling is, I don't like it. I think it's a safety hazard we don't have to put our kids up against, and we may need that entrance in future years. We may need that entire parking lot if we have to expand Round's capacity. So I'd like for future boards to have that option of using that entrance in any way they see fit. So that's my personal opinion. I visited Baldwin. I took a tour with the principal. While I was touring with the principal, a call came over the radio and all sorts of stuff going on and something happening. As we went toward the entrance, there was a child that was having issues, and it doesn't matter what his issues were, but he was having a breakdown. And our staff reacted so fast, and there were so many people in there taking care of this child. We teach our children, we educate our children, that's our number-one job, but there is so much more that this school system does to take care of these children. And I was just very, very proud of everyone in that situation. I wanted to go in there and fix this kid, because that's what I do, I fix things. I, you know, I get yelled at for trying to fix everything, and I know I couldn't. I'm completely out of my league, but I wanted to so bad. But these people were in there, and the kid calmed down, and it was just terrible to see this kid in this situation and wonderful to see how our people handled it. So I was quite proud of them. I had the honor of judging the Ms. Osborne contest. There were 14 young ladies that vied for that honor, and 14 spectacular young ladies. It was just wonderful. They did a very good job. It got down to five, and they had questions they had to answer. And they swear to us that they didn't have the questions ahead of time, but I never would've believed it. They, you know, they asked a question, I'm thinking, man, how would I answer that? And these girls are just popping off answers, and it was wonderful. So I was happy to do that and see them. And the audience was so supportive of all 14 girls. All of Osborne's student body supports their kids. It was very nice to see. And I think that's all I've got. I went longest tonight. Well, y'all went short and didn't, you know, fill anything up. All right, we're gonna go on to citizens' comments. I'm gonna read this, and this will pertain to both the citizens' comments and the public input on the superintendent's proposed budget. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about the services, policies, and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing and do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. Right now, I'm going to ask, you all signed up for the budget. Is there anyone that would like to speak on just regular citizens' comments? Ma'am? If you give me your name and address.
Jennifer Johnson. I'm a resident of Manassas, Manassas City Public Schools.
You've already signed up.
Yes, I am already signed up.
Thank you.
Good evening, School Board, Dr. McGorick. I addressed the school board two weeks ago at the meeting with reference to the plan to eliminate our interventionists and bring in PCG education. I was one of four parents who had the opportunity to meet with Dr. McGorick, actually last Friday, to have a little bit further conversation about the situation. So I can say that I'm at the point where, I understand we are going forward with this, so I am here today to talk a little bit about how I would like to, as a parent, have some input on where we go. We talk a lot about parental involvement in education, and it's absolutely essential. And I was recently helping to teach a second-grade class while I was substituting in the STEM lab, and their topic of conversation, the thing she was trying to teach them about, was communication. And one of the things that she really emphasized was that communication has to go both ways. There has to be listening, and there has to be information exchanged. And I'm not sure we have been quite there on either side with this so far. Just as sort of an example, one of the things that Dr. McGorick wanted to clear up was some confusion I had regarding the sole-source contracting. It was being used in a way that I have not seen it used before, that term. My husband, who works with federal government contracts, does not use it that way. So it was not until that meeting that I was aware that apparently PCG education is the only company that can do this. I've been asking, why did we select them? Why did we select them? I've asked that several times, and it wasn't until that meeting that I finally really got an answer, well, we don't have any other choice. So that's the kind of information that we think we need to get across. And I'm just not sure that we are getting all of the information out there that we have to the parents to explain why we're doing this and how we're going to be doing this. And I'm not sure if the parents are coming back to you with their thoughts on it. So I hope for anybody who's, you know, maybe listening out there, if they have concerns, I'm hoping they are expressing them as well. But I think the more information that can be provided to the parents as to where we're going and why, and what it is going to look like, and I know we don't have all of the answers on that, is absolutely essential. And how we're going to get those answers. Who is going to be involved in determining what it is going to look like? Whose input are we getting? Are we getting the teachers' input? Are we getting the current interventionist teachers' inputs? Are we getting parental input? I mean, which input do we want, and which input are we going to get? Another thing that we mentioned there that I think needs to be expressed is, we talked about how we believe all the parents already know where we're going with this interventionist program. That's not my experience. I've talked to a lot of parents who are surprised by this, they don't know what's going on. And I'm not sure how much information we are getting out to our non-English-speaking population. We have a number of them. A lot of those kids are in intervention because the fact that they were behind, because they had to learn English before they could learn the rest of the stuff. Are we making sure that those parents are getting all of the information? Is this information going out in their language as well? I think that's something that we need to make sure that we're doing. Another thing that I hope you really kind of look forward to, and it looks like I'm out of time, am I out of time or almost out of time?
Almost out.
Almost out, all right. I hope we also need to really...
I forgot to put the timer on, so I was just gonna let you go. The hour's all over.
You do not want to do that, Ms. Di Maria. We would never end this meeting. But I do hope we're also looking towards filling the gap. This may have solved our problem now, but there's gonna be a problem down the road. This teacher shortage is not going away. How are we going to continue to fill that back? Are we gonna look at the next group of teachers that our children desperately need, but we have to decide is expendable so we can get them into a classroom? You know, we need to make sure we're doing everything we can to know that teachers are valued. One of the things Dr. McGorick mentions, we're losing teachers who are new parents. Well, I'm looking at one of the policies that we've got coming out today, where lactating mothers are only gonna get that support for breastfeeding for one year. And maybe there's a reason for that that I'm not aware of, but if that's a policy that we're going for, let's see, Dr. McGorick's shaking her head, so maybe there's information that could be provided to explain what's going on there that I'm not seeing. We need to make sure we're doing that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did you want to address that? Not now? Okay. All right. Mr. Lovejoy, thank you for joining us. And our liaison to the school board, Mr. Wolf, thank you for joining us. I assume that the city council's budget work session is over. You just didn't leave to come down here, did you?
In schools, you could not mention.
There you go. Gotta like that. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak on just regular citizens' comments? Okay.
This is, I don't wanna miss my opportunity, so I will have an opportunity if I signed up later to speak about the budget, right?
That's what we're gonna do right now?
I'm just making sure.
Not later, right now. Matter of fact, you're next. All right, so now we're gonna speak about the superintendent's proposed budget. Crystal Levine?
Levine, good job.
And I'm gonna time you, 'cause now, well, now I remembered it. Nothing personal, but I'll wait till you start.
My name is Crystal Levine, and I'm a parent here in Manassas City. I've emailed all of you about my concerns about the interventionist outsourcing. I've met with some of you individually. I think all of you here know how I feel about it, that I'm concerned about how it's going to affect the children that receive interventionist services. I would like to make a comment also on how difficult it was for me to get the information that I was looking for. I hope that you guys can consider ways to make information available to concerned parents, so maybe streamline that process a little more. But I do appreciate the time that's been given, and I recognize that I'm being heard, and so I appreciate that. Also, as far as the interventionists, I do understand how this decision was come to. I understand that it is important to fill our classrooms with certified teachers and that... I would like to ask you tonight, though, how, whether this could've been communicated better to teachers especially. We know that our morale is low. We see it, it's supported by the engagement survey, and I hope that we look for opportunities to improve morale instead of just avoiding, trying to avoid opportunities to, I'm sorry, instead of just avoiding things that we know will reduce morale. I hope we're looking for opportunities to increase it. And I think that this was an opportunity for that, validating the contributions made by the current interventionists. And I think the way that it's been presented comes across as, yes, you have 15 years of experience, and you spend hours preparing lessons, and we think that anybody that we can bring in off the street, whether they're certified teachers or not, or whether they have any experience or not, is able to do that. And I don't know that that accurately conveys maybe how all of you feel, but I think that we've missed an opportunity here to help support and validate our teachers' contributions. I also wanted to just mention also that there are, I know that there are negotiation intricacies and that we can't know all the details because of that, because some of them haven't been worked out. But I find it a burden, a huge burden on me and a responsibility on me to be able to comment on a budget that I don't have numbers in front of me to look at. And maybe that's my accounting background and my auditing background, but I would really have liked to have seen more information before I was to speak on it.
Are you finished? Yeah, I don't, okay, good. Thank you. Can you tell me how to turn this off? Janice, is it Murnan? Yeah.
You're funny.
That one I knew.
I just wanted to renew my opposition of the taking certified teachers and contracting people to teach RTI in our schools. Many, I'm sorry, Janice Murnan, 8823P.
No, you're good.
Good evening. Many students rely on the RTI program to help them with extra support in math and reading. Certified teachers have the training and toolboxes of experience to help struggling students they meet with that a contracted, non-certified tutor will not have. And I know there's a teacher shortage, but the teachers at my school are already looking for positions at the risk of being unemployed when school begins, and I know you want them to move into other positions, classroom positions. And I know at least one of the RTI teachers who began at Mayfield is not gonna be able to stay at Mayfield, and she was here from 2006 when it opened because of the current RIF policy. If her position goes, so does her job, so she needs to move. And I realize that's where you want them to go, in the classroom. But some of the teachers are also looking outside to go to other systems, because there's not exactly a fit that they really would like to go into when they leave. And I know some of them felt kind of this was quite a shock when, last year, they were teaching in a classroom, and then this year, they moved to RTI to be able to work with a smug group of students, and then now they have to find another job, hopefully in the system. Bringing contractors into our school to take the place of certified teachers is not a good precedent. It undermines the value of a teaching license and the role of teachers in our school system. It also undermines the learning of our most vulnerable group, the struggling learner. We're a small city and a small community. I know that you guys have worked really hard to make the budget stretch with the high cost of education and the huge mandates, the endless mandates that you're given, and I really appreciate all the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have. Sign up. Anybody else like to speak on the budget? Okay, we were gonna leave this open until Thursday, in case anybody, all those thousands at home watching on TV, want to come in and speak to us, so that everybody has a chance. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, move the school board of the City of Manassas, adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Senator? I have a motion by Mr. Albert and a thinking by Mr. Williams to adopt the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry 7-0. Thank you. Discussion, policies.
Thank you.
Are we going with you?
We are.
Ms. Kiefer?
We are, excuse me. So, thank you. I am glad we're able to address the policies that we've been talking about through a lot of work, quite frankly. And I wanted to start by saying, and I see Mr. Hawkins and Ms. Wingfield here this evening, and wanna thank them first for being here. But I also wanna thank the staff who spent countless hours, literally, going through policies. For those of you who study our policies, and I know they're out there, there's many of them, and it takes a great deal of work. And Mrs. Sibeski really got us on the right track to make, taking the chairmanship of this committee very seamlessly, and I thank her for that. But I just really wanted to reiterate that the staff wanna ensure both currency of our policies, applicability to today, and consistency between our policies and those of the Virginia School Board Association, which is really the body by which most school systems in the Commonwealth of Virginia get guidance on policies. It's a service that is provided, they're looking at all the laws for us, they're providing the best guidance. So a large part of this process is comparing some that may be Manassas City-specific to ensure that, A, they're applicable to what we're doing and that we're in compliance with those. So just with a little bit of that background, I first wanted to say thank you to the staff for all the time that has gone into this, and they've made it really easy for a transition for me as the chair. I also wanna thank my school board colleagues. There was a lot of committee work that went into this, and every single one of these people up here were at the various committee meetings, whether they're on that committee or not, because they take this so seriously. So just a shout-out to all of you, in addition to all that you're already doing. I just wanted to say that. Tonight, we're putting forth policy changes that have been placed in front of you. And just to get the kind of discussion started tonight, I wanted to just say that there are specific areas to which the policies we're looking at tonight... are specific areas to which the policies we're looking at tonight are involved. One is fiscal management. One are support services. The other area are school and community relations, education-agency relations, and personnel. So, just a couple of things. I won't go into every single policy. I do want to address one that has been raised already tonight, just so that there's a clear understanding of what that is, and I'll actually turn that over to Dr. McGorick or Ms. Wingfield in just a moment, whoever would like to address it to make sure we get it right. Really, as it relates to the policies we're putting forward for discussion tonight amongst the board, it's either, there's no substantive, major, major substantive changes. There's a couple of classifications of what we're doing with policies. One I already mentioned, it's just looking at policies that are ready for updating because the SBA has passed them along to us. Secondly, we discovered there's some duplication amongst some of our Manassas City policies and those that were VSBAs. So, we basically deduped, if you will, duplicative policies. And third, we just wanted to make sure that any of the policies that we are retiring, we actually, I believe, found one from 1974, something that was completely irrelevant to today's society, and so anything that's kind of classified as retiring are usually for those reasons. So, there's nothing to read in behind that. It just really was not relevant to the times anymore. So, we're trying to be really current and really cool and up to speed on policies, if you will. So, those are really the three areas. I do want to, if it's okay, is it Ms. Wingfield will address the specific one related to lactation, because the other point to mention here is, these are the policies. Behind each policy, there are regulations, some that need to be updated as a result of the changes to the policy themselves, others that still need to be kind of written and adopted. So, there's a little bit of that going on with all of this as well.
The question was about the lactation policy. The way our policy is currently written, it was the same as VSBAs, except ours was open-ended. The SBA provides one year, and that allows the mother to pump whenever it was needed. After one year, the mother can still pump. She can do it during her planning, before school, after school, during lunch. It's just that coverage after the one year won't be provided, because as, you know, I think Dr. McGorick mentioned, one-third of our teachers are probationary, so we have a fairly young staff also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, as it relates to that one in particular, I can advise folks that the committees through whom that went through, and there's been, like I mentioned, a lot of meetings. It was raised by School Board members, myself included. And we understand now that with clarification behind the policy, we would never take away, you know, a woman's ability to be able to ensure that her child's taken care of. So, it's still going to be provided after the, as Ms. Wingfield had said, it's just in terms of the amount of class time that we're able to allot after that time period. So, I'm hoping that that clears up anything. I don't know if there's anything else to be added from anybody who talked about it. And that really is the one that we spoke about in more detail. As it relates to the other ones for the board to open up discussion, like I mentioned, substantively, it was either we are retiring some policies due to their lack of currency. We are either just updating them to reflect VSBAs in these areas, or just deduping ones that we have sort of in there twice that have been uncovered.
Thank you. Any discussion? That means you're doing a perfect job. Do you have any, sir? Just to throw a monkey wrench in the works?
No, I mean, Mrs. Kiefer said, each of the committees, subcommittees, talked about them. I know the education support, the finance committee, talked about theirs within their specific areas of responsibility. I know at least for those, there was nothing controversial substantive that really is there. It was more a matter of housekeeping. To Mrs. Kiefer's point, VSBAs recommends, based upon legal counsel, staff that works with the General Assembly that understands all of the legislation, what the best-in-class, I'll say, policy should be. Doesn't mean we have consistently always, you know, been in lockstep agreement with them, because we do have the latitude, and we do use that latitude, I think judiciously, to do what's right for Manassas, because sometimes we just are a little different. So...
One other thing I failed to mention, there are a couple policies that we may have modified of the VSBAs policy, and usually those, I'll give you an example. It was just stuff that we thought was really important, and it'll have an M on the end of the policy with regards to our finance and accounting. We thought it was really important. They weren't suggesting that we put in that there's an auditing thing in the policy itself. We think it's important for the purpose of transparency to have things in there that we will, and we do adhere to that. So, modifications, too, are small, but there are some. So, if you see an M on the end, we added some words that we thought were more relevant to Manassas City Public Schools.
Thank you, ma'am. And you thanked everybody for all of their input. We'd like to thank you for taking charge of this. I know it's not the easiest thing in the world to do, and we appreciate it very much. Ms. Wingfield came up here and spoke, and I'm not looking at any of these people up here, but she was dressed casually, and so I wanted to let everybody know that it was by order of the chairman that we dress casually tonight and warm. So, that's why everybody is dressed as they are. Not that she's dressed any more casually than anybody, but I just wanted to get that out there. If everybody's got a problem with it, it's my fault. All right, we will move on to the action agenda, cosmetology storefront. Mr. Hawkins, I assume?
During our last School Board meeting, we brought forward the proposal to remove $50,000 from our CIP contingency reserve fund in order to begin the process of designing a cosmetology storefront at Osborne High School. We need to be able to hire an architect and get it all designed, and to be able to bid the project out so that we can have the project done this summer. So, I know this was one of the top priorities of the superintendent during her budget presentation. So, we would like to make the recommendation to the board that we move these funds. We have over, I think we have approximately $426,000 in this fund right now, and we don't anticipate that moving these funds will have a detrimental effect on the fund going forward.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, I move the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the budget transfer request for the capital improvement plan, Osborne High School, cosmetology storefront proposed project.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion? I have a question. You can stay there. Where's it going? Do we know?
So, if you're in the cosmetology lab, it'll be to the far left, I think, where they're talking about going, in that bay area where all they, where they're cutting their hair now.
Right.
It'll be to the far-left, far-left corner of the room.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, may I change my mind? I do have a comment.
You have that prerogative.
I just want to express the reasoning behind doing this. CTE is something that we, as a nation, need to bring back to our school systems. It was, we had it when I was in high school, and somehow we've come away from CTE and pushing everybody on the college track. Well, what the effect of that has happened throughout our nation is now we have a lack of HVAC guys, plumbers, auto mechanic people. There's a real shortage. There are millions and millions of jobs out there that can't be filled because of the lack of education that I feel the school system needs to get back into. And putting a storefront in the cosmetology really helps. People do actually come to the high school, get their hair done, I don't know what, nails, whatever they do. And the interface of connecting with another human as they come in the door really does provide a skill set for these kids, that they will be prepared when they get out, and I think it's very important that we do this. That's the comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Ms. Williams, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the budget transfer for the CIP OHS cosmetology storefront proposed project. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero. Our mayor, thank you very much for being here. I guess you, well, that's okay. You were working. We know you were working upstairs.
I can see all, all of you look pretty.
No matter what we're wearing.
It says a man wearing boots.
He's got a sweater on. Okay, everybody done? Now, I don't normally do this, so hopefully I do this right. We are going to go into recess until Thursday at 7:00. Y'all can go.